I would like to call this meeting to order, the meeting of the Lathir Village Planning Commission June 15th, 2021. We will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, the Republic stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Great. With that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Roll call, Chair Petrowski, Vice Chair Hammond.
Present, attending from Lathir Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Board Member Dillard Rousseau.
Present, attending from Lathir Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Board Member Fobbs.
Present, attending from Lathir Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Board Member Hicks.
Present, attending for Lathir Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Board Member Cantor.
Here, Lathir Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Board Member Stansberry.
Here, Lathir Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Mr. Vice Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to excuse Chairman Petrowski from the meeting.
Make a motion to excuse Chairman Petrowski?
Second.
So moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Roll call, Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Sorry. Board Member Dillard Rousseau.
Yes.
Board Member Fobbs.
Aye.
Board Member Hicks.
Aye.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
And Board Member Stansberry.
Aye.
Motion carried to excuse Chair Petrowski.
Very much. Next agenda item is the approval of today's agenda. Anybody have any recommendations, suggestions, desires to adjust the agenda or make any changes or add anything? Please speak up now. Okay, entertain a motion to approve to the today's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
So moved and seconded, Madam Clerk, please take the roll call.
Roll call, Board Member Dillard Rousseau.
Yes, I apologize, yes.
Board Member Fobbs.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Board Member Hicks.
Yes.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
And Board Member Stansberry.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the agenda.
What? All right, we'll move on to the next item in the agenda, which is the approval of the meeting minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of May 18th, 2021. If anybody has any corrections or additions or things they'd like to add after reading the minutes, may do so now.
Because we weren't Board Member of Planning Commissioners at the time, do we abstain from that?
You have a copy, you have a copy of the meeting minutes in the agenda, so even if you didn't attend the meeting, you can still review the minutes and you may vote. Okay, with no corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of May 18th, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from May 18th, 2021.
Second.
So moved and seconded, Madam Clerk, please take the roll call.
Roll call, Board Member Fobbs.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Board Member Hicks.
Yes.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Board Member Stansberry.
Aye.
And Board Member Dillard Rousseau.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the minutes of May 18th, 2021.
Thank you. Next agenda item is public comment. At this point, we'll open up the floor to anyone who's attending the meeting as part of a public and would like to address any item that is not already on today's agenda.
You have one, you have two individuals raising their hands, so I will let Jarrett top first. Jarrett, you are unmuted.
Excellent. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'd be more than happy to show my face. I'm just, I'm not familiar with Zoom, surprisingly. But here I go, um, sorry. Hello, everyone, and thanks for giving me a few minutes to speak. This is a subject that I'm very passionate about, and it makes me excited to be a voice on the subject in my local community. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jarrett. I've lived in Lathir for almost four years now, and I love the community. I work at Livwell Enlightened Health as an advanced processor in our trim department where I help to facilitate the movement of marijuana plants from our farms throughout various stages of trim while adhering to strict regulations on safety and quality. Livwell's main headquarters is in Colorado with a Michigan headquarters being in Warren. The facility is state of the art, top notch, and I'm very proud of the teams that I work with.
Hey Jarrett, Jarrett, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yep.
That sounds like you're speaking on a topic related to the cannabis zoning ordinance, which we're going to cover today and is on the agenda.
Yep.
This section for public comment is for items that are not on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, I just, I'm sorry, I know it seems a little bit out of place. I just, I saw a lot of public comment on one of the postings, and there was a lot of information flying in every direction, so I just wanted to quickly clear some of that up.
When we get to that item of the agenda, we'll bring you back on board and bring your statement in there. There's Agenda Item Eight. Item Eight is public comments specifically around the zoning ordinance, so I'll let me make you first when we get to that agenda item, is that all right?
Sounds good, thank you.
Awesome, thanks Jarrett, appreciate it.
All right, you also have one other, Ms. Yolanda Charles. Ms. Charles, you are unmuted.
Thank you. I will not take much time. I just wanted to bring greetings. I am your Oakland County Commissioner representing the awesome city of Laker Village. I happened to peek on your master calendar and saw you were meeting tonight and that it was virtual. So I love planning. I think you guys are doing a yeoman's job, and it's also a thankless one, so thank you on the behalf of me, and I wanted to extend my contact information, which is charlzyy@ogov.com, and I'd just welcome you to reach out to me for anything where you need advocacy or insight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charles.
Okay. I do not see any other individuals with their hands raised or anything in the chat, so I will assume everyone else is for item eight A.
Excellent. Okay, thanks. So with that, we'll close out the public comment agenda item and move on to new business. First agenda item in new business is the election of a new secretary to the Planning Commission. So with the departure of Anna Thompson, we have an open spot for secretary position on the Planning Commission. And we will entertain nominations at this time. I want to make it really clear, just because Robin and Terrence, you guys have just joined the Planning Commission today, doesn't mean you're not eligible. If you would be interested in taking on that role, we would love to have have one of you nominated, but of course, anyone else who's currently a member is welcome to extend nominations as well. Well, you can, I believe you can nominate yourself, Scott, is that true?
Yeah, you can. It's, you know, fairly looked down upon, but usually we end up nominating somebody.
Well, I didn't get a chance to reach out to him before the meeting, but I wanted to nominate Les Stansberry for secretary.
Oh, really?
I'll second that.
What are the duties of the secretary?
Basically, the secretary.
Your autograph goes on all the official actions of the Planning Commission.
Gotcha, okay.
Besides stuff. In the event that the vice chair and the chair both can't make a meeting, it's third in charge, you'd be running the meeting. That's the only other thing.
We'll make sure that you're here.
Like, excellent. Any other nominations? Anybody else interested in the position at this point? Okay, with that, we have our nomination, and it's been seconded and accepted. So Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call to vote for the new secretary?
Roll call, Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes, I support Les Stansberry.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes, I think he'll be great.
Board Member Stansberry.
Sure, I'll vote for my.
Board Member Dillard Rousseau.
I would say yes, Les, looking forward to working with you and meeting you even further.
Nice to meet you also.
Board Member Fobbs.
Yes.
And Board Member Hicks.
Yes.
Motion carried to appoint Board Member, now Secretary Les Stansberry, to the Planning Commission.
Congratulations, Les, thanks for stepping up, appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is to set the public hearing date to adopt the 2021 Comprehensive Plan on July 20th, 2021. Suzie or Jill, one of you want to introduce this one?
Sure, you may recall, we just body forwarded this on to City Council, and they released it for public comment back in May, I guess it was. So we are currently in the midst of that, is it 63 days? I always say, all right, 63 days, public comment period, and that will put you right there at July 20th. So let's get this public, final public hearing, and then you can adopt it and then forward it on to council, and we can continue busting a move on those implementation strategies.
Great. So Scott, is there something we have to buy on as well?
You are muted, sir.
Keep hitting the wrong button here. I said, yeah, it's on the agenda, you might as well.
We'll vote for it. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to set the public hearing to adopt 2021 Comprehensive Plan on July 20th, 2021.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Public Hearing.
I'll second. Oh, go ahead, Bruce.
That's fine, you go on.
We got Will doing it, that's fine, great. So moved and seconded, and with that, we'll, Madam Clerk, let's please take the roll call for this item.
Roll call, Board Member Hicks.
Yes.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Secretary Stansberry.
Aye.
Board Member Dillard Rousseau.
Yes.
Board Member Fobbs.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carried to schedule a public hearing for July 20th, 2021, for the 2021 Comprehensive Plan.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item of new business is the zoning text amendments on landscaping standards. Jill, you want to.
Jump right in, Suzie. She's got it, yes. Hello and welcome to the new planning commissioners. I'm Jill Bame. I am the city's planning consultant, along with Eric Peach, my colleague. We have worked for the city, well, I've worked with the city since 2010, I think, so it's been a number of years. Have seen a lot of fine planning commissioners serving the community, and I'm really looking forward to meeting you in person and working together with you. This is, we've got really a good, I feel like a good agenda for you all because we're not really, I don't think, asking you to make any tough decisions tonight. So it's a good opportunity to kind of get a little feel for how things run and get a little background. So our first item that we have tonight is something kind of different than what we've been talking about lately, and that's landscaping standards. So you'll see in your packet, we typically will send you a memo like the one that you have in the packet where we let you know why we're talking about this, so that's the introduction, what prompted this discussion. And then some of the background on the issue. So what are other communities doing? Why would it be helpful for us to consider making some changes? And then what are some things that we need to be considering? And then we look at the current ordinance, and we kind of walk through, how does the current ordinance address or not address a certain issue? And then we usually will make a recommendation. So for the landscaping section, I think probably the first thing to know about that is that I think the landscape standards were probably written, I couldn't even guess how long ago they were written. I would guess maybe 20, 30 or more years ago. They were really probably very good at the time in that they're very much suburban landscape standards. So you'll see in there, there's standards for parking lot landscaping, there's a certain percentage of a lot that needs to be landscaped. But what I think that we find is we go and try to make, do development reviews, particularly in cases where we're trying to bring existing properties up to standards and trying to help them meet the current ordinance, we're finding it to be very challenging. And the challenges come from relatively small lots, relatively built out lots, and a need for parking. So in many cases, I think that, and planning commissioners, you, ones who've been around, you know, feel free to jump in on this. I think there's a lot of time where we kind of struggle with how much can we ask a developer or a property owner to bring their property into compliance with standards that may not necessarily apply in all cases. So we were recommending that we take a look at the landscaping really from the ground up. Oh, look at that, I made a pun. So starting all the way from, you know, why would we do this? Why would we need landscaping? For two reasons. One, because landscaping looks really good, and we want to help our properties look as good as they can. We know we've got some limitations within the frontage along Southfield Road, but how else could we leverage what available space we have into greening it up? Another aspect, and maybe something that we might talk about a little bit later, would be some of the issues related to stormwater. So we know that the more hard surface we have on a lot, the faster the water's going to run. And if it can't go someplace, it's going to pool and it's going to flood, and we know that we've got problems with that. So landscaping and stormwater can kind of overlap and come together, so I think those are two ways in which I think it's important and timely to address this issue. And so the memo that we put in the packet really was just to give you an idea of generally how landscape ordinances are organized and what they cover, and then some things that we noticed in your ordinance. And then we really just wanted to get a little bit of a feel from the Planning Commission about their concerns and their thoughts about landscaping in the corridor before we do any kind of recommendation on any ordinance language. So that's the, that's just really the introduction, and I'll open that up then for comments and discussion.
So, yeah, I mean, I read through this, it makes sense to me. I guess my questions were, this is a tricky one, there's, there's not, you can think as you're walking around the city of specific examples of things like not enough green space on Southfield Road, or I know I've heard complaints about vacant lots that maybe aren't cared for very well, some of which are actually owned by the city. And so I guess, other than those examples that I have in my own brain, are there, are there examples that you've run into during preparation for site plan reviews, like specific examples that you think really generated the challenges that you, you guys are experiencing where you're helping property owners establish site plan reviews that we should maybe prioritize and keep in mind more maybe than other general like maintenance and things like that?
Yeah, I think one of the areas is the parking lot landscape or the landscape islands. That seems to be something that we just don't see property owners really having the room to accommodate, unless they're going into the alleyway, and that's triggering a whole other set of things they have to ask for and other considerations from council. But it's tough behind a lot to be able to accommodate that. If somebody was going to redevelop a large portion of that, we would, you know, have that kind of requirement, and that might be challenging and potentially prohibitive. I think in our new section where we're going to open that up and have brand new parking lots as part of the ordinance that we've already amended, I think that's very appropriate in those locations, but in some of our tighter spots, that might not be.
So does that mean like using the available square footage or the number of parking spaces? Like, what's the way you measure when you need, when it's appropriate to have landscaping in a parking island, parking lot island and when it's not?
Yes, I think our standards for, I didn't pull that up. Pull that all the way up. There's two things. One, it is based on the number of parking spaces, but then we also might want to consider how much of an improvement is happening on the site and when and how we level people up, so to speak, with their compliance with the ordinance. So the way it is now, I think it's just a hard, there's not a good, a good place to start or stop some of those requirements, and I think our goal is to get people to comply as much as they can. But I think that would be helpful if we have that clarified. So for parking lot landscaping, we have 15 square feet of landscaping for each parking space provided in the parking area with a minimum of 150 square feet on any lot. But then there are some other standards for that in terms of the size of those islands. There's a minimum of one tree for every 400 square feet of landscaping, and then there are some requirements with using the landscape islands to delineate the onsite circulation, and I think that in some cases, there's just not enough room to do all that.
So, yeah, it makes, that makes sense to me, and I guess what I'm looking for in terms of an ordinance, because one concern I've heard from residents about some, not the specific ordinance language, but other ordinance language that we consider is that it's, it's too broad, provides too much leeway. The Planning Commission, the opportunity to potentially just decide of our own accord whether or not to allow something or not allow something. And some people feel like that's maybe too much power for the Planning Commission to wield on its own. So what I like to do is have in the ordinance at least some structure, some, something measurable that we can point to and say, well, you know, in this specific case, these measurements were in place, the number of parking spaces, the square footage, whatever. And so we made our decision in line with the compliance with that, or we declined or made, you know, didn't, didn't agree to approve a site plan because it wasn't in compliance with those measurements. And I get that we, it needs to be a little bit, it needs to be much more flexible because there's limited space in a lot of these areas, make a great point there. I guess I just don't want to leave it like open ended and kind of up to our interpretation to decide one case to the next, whether we would require that or not.
I think that makes sense.
Jill, the ordinance today is kind of broad, it covers just about everything. I guess one question, at some point, you know, we look at these ordinances as we look at new or updated development at a particular site. But how can we find a way to utilize these ordinances to bring current sites into compliance to some kind of way? I mean, based on the limited amount of space, but there's a lot of limitations, but there's a lot of improvement that could be done at a lot of locations, including some of the city-owned spots. But is there a way that this, we can use this as a way as part of the enforcement process so that we can say, hey, we're going to continue to review properties on a continual basis to make sure they're in compliance? So no one feels like we picked them out of, out of a lineup and said, hey, we don't like the way your site is, and then they'll point and say, well, you didn't say anything to the person across the street from me. Well, we're going to get to them too, but I guess the question is, as we update this, is that, is there a way to do something or put something in there that allows for it to be continuously reviewed on existing properties, not just, we only pull it out when we get somebody who wants to make a change?
Yes, I think that is a really good point, and I, in terms of the enforcement aspect of it, I would say any ordinance is only as good as it is enforced. And so you're absolutely right about consistency. The best way to get people to comply with your ordinance is to enforce it and enforce it for everybody. Because that's, that means that you truly are interested in achieving the goals that the ordinance sets out to, to, to cast for you. In terms of ongoing maintenance, I think that is a really important point, and I don't think the current ordinance really addresses that. And I do think that that's something that would be good to include in terms of ongoing maintenance. And I do think that the points about the vacant lots and regardless of ownership is important as well.
The other question I have. I'm sorry, Bruce.
I was just going to say, to Jill's first point, you know, we do have a full-time code enforcer now, and that, you know, we're already seeing, I mean, if you just, if you go up and down, I know you walk a lot less, like you go up and down Southfield Road, you're starting to see, for example, all the parking lots are starting to come into compliance, you know, so, so he's, he's doing that, it just, it just takes, it just takes time.
You know, Jill, when you read the ordinance, like you said in the beginning, you can tell it was written some time ago. Is there, I don't know how you can word this in the ordinance, because of the, the ability of people now to use companies other than landscape architects, how would you be to put that in there? Because, I mean, I could be a business owner that has a site, but you know, I might have a great relationship with English Garden, they, they would do the same. I give them what I need, and they can lay it all out and give it to me, so I can give it to the city to approve. But I'm not sure they have a quote unquote licensed landscape architect on site, on staff, that's approved by the state and by the city. How do you, how can we get other landscaping companies to be approved to do some of this other than just have to have a cost for a landscape architect? Unless it's a new development or it's part of a revised site plan. I just, I couldn't figure out how to do that.
I think that is a great point, and I'm really glad that you used the idea of somebody else in the landscape field rather than like a licensed engineer or a surveyor, because I don't think that they always can understand the constraints of a site. They may not really appreciate the amount of road salts or the lack of water or the maintenance ability and capacity of a property owner, and that's why I think the landscape architect is so important to keep in there. But I do like the idea of trying to ensure that, that there are, you know, we recognize that there are other professionals who can do these things. And so I'll look at that, and I'll see if there's a way that we can craft that so that is clear.
I mean, I'm not saying that you don't want Les to do it, but you might want English Garden to do it.
And I, you know, that's the other thing too. I think, you know, when we think about, oh, we don't want to have property owners or business owners have to incur the cost of hiring a landscape architect, but I think if you're going to make an investment into landscaping, you want to make sure you're making a good investment. And so it seems to me that the money that you spend upfront to have properly selected materials, properly planted materials, and maybe a little bit of an education on how to maintain them over time is going to make a really great investment in the long run. So I think, and that part, we can't really put into the ordinance, all of that, I mean, we can in a way, but we could potentially supplement the ordinance language with some guidelines that might really be able to illustrate in a way that an ordinance rules couldn't. And I think some of the, the whole list of species that we want, I think that all can come out and be included in the guidelines, because those things change early. You know, from time to time, we get a new disease, we get a new pest, we don't need to, we don't want to have to go in and amend our ordinance every time that happens. But maybe we have a set of standards on hand that people can choose, you know, to look at and, and know the things that we don't want them to be planting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Parents has a hand up, did you, you want to add something?
Yeah, um, uh, I'm knowing new kid on the block, I'm trying to follow, and initially I said I was just going to be a silent observer until I can. Uh absorb, you know, the flow and that sort of thing, but I do some work with Detroit Water and Sewer Department. Uh some community outreach and community relations, and one of the presentations we make. Talks about pervious concrete or materials that reduce runoff and thus saves um. A business owner or owner is some expenses, and there are a number of ways to do that, but one thing is pervious. Concrete uh that allows the rainwater absorb into the soil, so. Uh, you know, different things can be done um. To, you know, as I say, reduce ru- uh runoff, but you know, I'm always thinking green. And that does come to my mind based on this conversation.
That's a great point, um and I really like that, and probably. As we move into our conversation later about sustainability, that will definitely be something that will, will come up again, and we'll probably tap into your expertise on that as well.
Yeah, because it's sometimes it's, it's not, I mean, if you're building or rebuilding um uh of an existing property. Then that's relatively inexpensive way to prevent the runoff, so. Uh there's just a consideration that came to my mind.
Excellent, thank you.
Jill, does, does, does it make sense to to bifurcate this into multiple sections or two sections for? You know, one for residential, one for. Commercial, because when I, one of the things I was confused, a little confused about when I was reading through it. Was it, you know, it, it seemed all very commercial and then interjected in areas, it talked a little bit about residential. Um, so would it make sense to have a separate section in the, in the ordinance before rewriting it for residential versus commercial? Then I'm throwing that out there as a question, so.
Yeah, I think um there, there can be different standards for residential and commercial.
Well, and as a good lead on, lead in, um Cheryl commented, you know, what are the implications for? The content and locations of rain gardens, which is something I know you and I have talked about, Jill. And that's been something that Rami has been running into lately as we. Go through, you know, start going through the infrastructure projects and who has rain gardens in their, in their ditches. Which ones are real true rain gardens and are serving the purpose? That they're intended to serve and which ones are just people being. Kind of lazy or just saying, if I throw whatever plants in there, it counts as a rain garden, so that. And then um, the other comment to that was, would there be an application of sort of a preexisting nonconforming? Uh a standard for landscaping?
Well, that's a couple of different questions, but I think in terms of the rain garden question. And some of the ones that might be looking a little old in the tooth right now, maybe weren't planted properly. I think we, I mean, there's a couple of different ways we could go about that, but I think one of the bigger ones, and I know that there. Was a resident years ago who was, who really championed the rain gardens. And I believe, I, and I'm not positive, but I, because this was before we started working with community, but I, I feel like before there was a. Some sort of documentation on. How to do those, how to do them properly, so maybe we can update that, I mean, we can certainly do that, we just um. Our company Giffords Webster was last week or the week before, we volunteered for um. The Friends of the Rouge doing uh parking lot planting of their late rain gardens in their parking lot in Plymouth. And I was with some of the landscape architects in our company, and we were talking about the rain gardens and how um. That was one of my questions, was how do we keep the rain gardens from looking crappy, so that our communities don't say they don't want rain gardens, because they always look crappy. So, or she was, we were talking about, you know, the importance of. Design and material selection and planting and maintenance, and I think that's something that. Like certainly can be an ordinance standard, but um. You know, it could also be a guideline, it could be an educational tool, and maybe it's an educational workshop even. That, that the community hosts maybe once a year even. Um to remind people on how to not only plant them, but how to take care of them year after year.
Right, but it's not, it's not just an issue of how they look, it's an issue of. In our, right, in our situation, they've got to function, and we had, we've talked a lot about this over the last two years with respect to the. Infrastructure committee and what we were going to do with, with respect to, 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 to ditches. Um, you know, and and it's, it's a hard call, because I mean, the city, you know, was promoting them for a while, but then we've kind of recently had more of a stance of, well. Do we really want them? Because they're, you know, a lot of them are not done correctly, and what they're doing is inhibiting the flow and causing. You know, all these, these backups um that, that people are complaining nonstop about, so.
Right, and I think, again, that gets to the importance of design and material selection.
And going even to that maintenance standard, like, right, if me, if your landscaping ordinance is only good as your maintenance. The, the lack of just staff knowledge on. How are they supposed to be maintained, right? And then, and that's. I mean, the rain garden at City Hall is kind of a great example, unfortunately, right? Like. How is it supposed to be maintained? Because it doesn't always look very pretty.
And it may have been designed well, and it may have been planned well, but if it wasn't maintained properly, that all kind of went to by the wayside. So I think those are really good points to bring up.
As far as the nonconforming question, I mean, obviously, any existing approved landscaping plans, we wouldn't make them go back and. Become compliant, but uh most of the things in here, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jill, but the, I think the enforcement type issues. Uh would, would carry forward, uh and so those would, those would still be applicable to all property owners, regardless of a new ordinance.
The maintenance, I mean, take the maintenance of them, yes, definitely.
Yeah, a- a- as an add to um. When you say enforcement, you know, I kind of like to think along the lines of credits, which would. Make them want to do these things, and I don't know exactly how that works, uh tax credits or otherwise to, to um. Make sure that they are interested in doing so, um so, as opposed to the enforcement. Uh more of an enhancement, is something that make them want to do it. Um tax credits or uh something of that nature.
That's what's one way of getting legally nonconforming uses compliant with, with um. Updates to your, to your ordinance. Now, th- in this situation, probably. You know, the, what we're anticipating or what we're looking at for potential changes is probably not going to really. Um make the, you know, DDA or somebody want to put up a bunch of money to try to incentivize people to come compliant. But um it is, it is a tool that could be utilized for up, for other um type of ordinance amendments.
Or even, even starting back at a higher level, do we, do we want to even allow them uh, you know, as within the city? I mean, that's, that was a lot of discuss, there was a lot of discussion about that and recommendations made. Um to not allow them going forward, um because of the fact that there's so many of them are non-maintained and. Um or we're just, as, as Suzie said, just somebody throwing a bunch of plants, you know, in the. In, in, in a ditch and, and uh, and calling it a rain guard, you know, when, when it doesn't really. Do what it's intended to do, and, and, you know, again, it just causes a lot of problems infrastructure wise, which w- we're going to get into as, as a city. Um, you know, over the next two years, as we continue with the, the road program and the. Uh, you know, we'd be working on the ditches, and there are people who are not going to be happy when they're, you know, they're uh. You know, rain garden that's, that's impeding the water is going to have to be, you know, graded right through the, right down through the middle of it, so. Um, you know, I was actually, I won't give names, but you are engineer Jill. Who, who made the uh recommendation that we don't allow them moving forward because of the problems that, that, that they cause, so. Um, so, you know, it might, might even be a bigger issue for council to discuss whether or not we want to. Allow that in, in the future, so.
You also want to take into account the reasons why they were allowed in the first place.
Right.
So it's worthwhile to do the research to look back at when. The city first decided to encourage use of rain gardens, and just take that into consideration as well. See, are those things still valid or not? And, you know, maybe people just uh, they, maybe it's just an education thing, right? And people just need to be taught how to maintain their rain gardens better, or make sure that they're installed properly or. What have you, maybe, I don't know, can we do some sort of like a financial repercussion if you install a rain garden and you do it badly? And it causes problems, like, I don't know, something that you can legis- legislate, but.
You can, Jason, just from the perspective of, of just aggressive enforcement. And, but again, you know, to our conversation yesterday, Suzie. You know, then, you know, Rami's going to need some type of training to, you know, be able to determine, you know, which ones, you know, have the right. You know, soil content and so forth, so that they are draining and.
Right.
But, you know, if, you know, maybe, you know, that, that could be an answer too, you know, continue to, maybe even promote them, but just as long as we aggressively enforce. Um, you know, that they're done correctly and that they're continuously maintained, which.
That people who decide to install them understand that they're going to be under scrutiny.
Right.
That, right, as far as the education and kind of approval process for getting something like that installed.
Well, one of the thoughts that I've had, just kind of related to that is, you know, how do you know, you know? Want to help differentiate, like, who's a, who has a legitimate rain garden and who does not, maybe it's just a. You know, an annual registration, like zero cost registration, like, tell us who you are, let us know. So we can at least go through and maybe we certify them every year, I don't. I don't know, that, that idea is still kind of out in nebulous forming land, but um. You know, there's got to be a way for us to track. Um to, to track these, so we know we're not, you know, we're not dinging somebody that shouldn't be dinged, you know?
Right, and it could be something where you are, are providing some sort of um. Incentive, but it doesn't become actualized until five years down the road. So that something you, you're working towards that, you get to that point, and then you get whatever the credit is that we, that we establish.
A good idea.
Very good. Any other comments or concerns about landscaping in general or specifically?
Um I, I noticed under the section for maintenance in your memo, there was a question around. Uh the statement in the ordinance around unhealthy and dead material. Healthy and dead material should be replaced within one year or by the end of the planting season, and there was a question about, well, when does the one year start? I, from my perspective, I feel like it should start from the point when the. Dead or unhealthy material is noticed. Like if it's reported to the city, either through a phone call or see click fix or. By the property owner themselves in some what manner, email, what have you, but uh, that, that's my thought, it's like, once it's noticed and, and reported, then. The person is notified and it'll be maybe one year from that notification.
Or I, I would say, and the end of the next planting season. You know, um, I mean, there's, again, just walking up and down Southfield over the years, there's been. Bushes that have been dead for years, that the property owner has done nothing on it.
So, maybe, oh, because that's, it's, it's written that way right now, where it's both, it's just unclear where it starts.
Right.
So it's the, it should be, right, it should be within one year. Or by the end of the next planting season, whichever comes first.
Right.
The date from which you're counting down, and I think that that date should be. If, if it's reported to the city, then the date when the property owner is notified um of the issue. Um, there's, the next bullet was about um. Potentially having an additional requirement for property managers to have an ongoing seasonal maintenance program for all landscaping. And while I think that that's admirable, I would be concerned that smaller businesses might be challenged to be able to afford that. If there are property owners that maybe do their own maintenance, for example, so um. I don't know if there's some way we can kind of in- incentivize similar to what we were talking about, what, what parents mentioned with credits. I don't know if that's a great idea or not, but some way that we can incentivize people to actually sign up for maintenance programs, maybe we can. Work with a couple of different companies that would provide a discount. If you sign up for their service through a city promoted campaign or something like that.
And I think something like that too could be um as part of a guideline, or it could be part of just one of your standards of site plan review where you're asking. Uh just by matter of course, do you have a maintenance program for your, your ma- your landscaping that you've selected? And can you tell? Just so that they're thinking, um, and we could even be doing that as we hear, we go come to the community and they say. We're interested in, in a new development, um, and then. Uh, you know, we just asked that question at the beginning, in part of, as part of pre-application or even before that, like. Landscaping is going to be important, we want you to consider addressing it now.
That's great, yeah, if you guys have a list that you go through with the applicants, that would be a great one to add.
Yeah.
List of questions. That's all I had.
We, we do have another, we had a comment from, wow, one of our members of public, I think it's probably. Also part, this and part of their sustainability, but um, the. They question, what about chemical on lawn and runoff into our water? So what, you know, what could, is or could be done about that, so.
So I am assuming that the comments about, you know, people who use. Chemical companies to help maintain their lawns so that they're green and what have you, and of course. Then it rains and some of that chemical may run off and end up in water, I assume that the city's water filtration services. Deal with that to some degree, but. And it's addressed in the water quality reports, I imagine, right, are required to be published every year. By the city.
I think that's another um area that uh we can start looking at, community education about. Um natural ways to take care of your lawn. Um what kinds of products can we put on that are, that are good for our lawns and good for the environment, and also, you know, keep. Keep the grass green and soft under our feet as well.
It's a great idea. Oh, there was one other note in your memo, Jill, about vacant lots, and it referenced the section five dot fifteen dot ten. Looking at the ordinance, the five dot fifteen dot ten looks like it's about yard landscaping. Uh, five dot fifteen dot twelve is about vacant lot maintenance.
Oh, yep, you're right.
And the statement in the ordinance is the owners of all vacant lots must cause them to control or conform to the city.
No, it was ten, ten was the one I was asking, it was.
So. Oh, this requirement shall not apply to vacant lots, that's what you're asking.
So it's saying that all anything that's developed into a parking facility or occupied by sidewalks or driveways or other structures. Should be grass, but then it says, but that doesn't apply to vacant lots, and I wonder if something should apply to vacant lots.
Well, I think five dot fifteen dot twelve applies to vacant lots, right, and it says that you need to be, you mean to maintain them.
Right, so I think we just need to clarify those.
I wonder why they put that exclusion in when the ordinance was written in the first place.
Maybe we had a lot of vacant lots back then.
Maybe, but you still have a sta- statement on vacant lot maintenance that it actually addresses that, so I don't know why you add the exclusion. I guess why, my recommendation would be consider just slashing that. That last part of five fifteen ten that says this requirement shall not apply to vacant lots, because I feel like it's. Redundant with five fifteen twelve, which obviously requires maintenance of vacant lots.
So that's something that we can reconcile.
What about the permits that are mentioned on five fifteen thirteen? Are people actually getting these landscape special permits?
Uh landscape special permits, I don't know, Suzie, do you know about that?
No. Um.
I mean, you do have that as part of site plan review, I think it's probably fairly. Unusual that we would see a, a project that would come in with people removing trees, because we just don't have that many.
Yeah, I, yeah, I can't think of anything that is, that has come before us like that yet, yet, right, yet. Um.
I guess like, like, reading it, it, I don't, I can't imagine what the purpose of a special, a landscape special permit. I guess like, my reading it, it, I don't, I can't imagine what the purpose of a special, a landscape special permit would be if we're doing site plan reviews for a situation where a vacant lot's being converted for use by construction of land improvements or an existing developed lot is being altered by the destruction of a new building like that. Those, both of those are situations where it would come to us for site review. And then we would ask these questions around the landscaping, so I needed a permit.
I mean, I, I read this and I think about some of the plants that my husband's told me about in Farmington Hills and they're extremely large scale developments and they are taking down multiple large full grown trees, you know, and I just, I, I don't know where exactly that would necessarily happen. Particularly in our commercial district, right? Uh, maybe that'll be a thing in, if one house in the woods ever gets developed, but I don't. This seems like a very rare situation.
It is, it might come up if somebody was actually planning to tear down an existing building and build something. I guess it's worth while we leave it in there for that purpose. I don't personally have anything else to add. Anybody else have anything they want to add? Okay, I think we're good then to close out that item in the agenda. Thank you, Jill. That was great. Appreciate that. So move on to agenda item eight, old business and tabled items. And this is where we'll open up the discussion for public comment on the draft recreational cannabis zoning ordinance, which Jared already raising his hand and is eager to give us his insights.
Right, so, um, typically, Jason, you all, um, you know, three minutes is the standard. I don't know if that's, if you'd like to do that. I don't, we don't, we tried out a timer once on Zoom. I can just give you a wave if you'd prefer, and I can do that on my phone. It's up to.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to keep time. Let's try and keep it to three minutes. I'll provide a little bit of leeway, as long as it's not too much longer, but I'll, I'll be attempting to get people to wind up their comments in three minutes, and I can keep the time, it's no problem.
Okay, I will, you know, I, I will, I'll, I'll join you in timekeeping, so. Jared, without further ado, you should be good to speak.
Okay, cool. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, my apologies for butting in earlier at the wrong spot. I indeed was eager and apparently wasn't listening well enough. So, hello everyone, and thanks for giving me a few minutes to speak. I promise it won't take much longer than three minutes. This is a subject I'm very passionate about, and it makes me excited to be a voice on the subject in my local community. For those of you don't know me, many here about three and a half years. I love it here. I work at Live Well Enlightened Health as an advanced processor in our trim department, where I helped to facilitate the movement of marijuana plants from our farms to the various stages of trim, while adhering to strict regulations on safety and quality. Live Well's main headquarters are in Colorado, with the Michigan headquarters in Warren. The facility is state of the art, top notch, and I'm proud of the teams I work with. Live Well is actually currently in the process of obtaining licenses for multiple dispensaries around Michigan. While this current location is just a large facility that has everything from farms to concentrates to packaging, you name it. They have everything besides their own dispensaries so far. There truly is too much to go over in such a short time to give an accurate and concise story of the, of cannabis and its effects on society. However, uh, this is in regards to the historic background of its use, effect on culture, punishment and conviction under law, its effect on the environment, and so much more. However, it is appropriate to say that the decades of criminalization of marijuana has unjustly tarnished both the image and its usefulness. Many people, myself included, for a long time have fallen prey to the stigma associated with marijuana. Treating marijuana as a dangerous drug has done a measurable harm to small communities as well as the world in general, general. However, that is changing quickly. What we're seeing over the last decade or so of the domino effect legalization in the states and regulation is a trend of lower crime rates that is external from the crimes directly caused by the lifting of cannabis laws. Uh, in areas where there are more relaxed cannabis laws, we're also seeing lower rates of youth illicit drug use, lower rates of prescription drug reliance and abuse, and many other positives. Cannabis dispensaries offer a safe, reliable and consistent way for people to get affordable and necessary medicine. I even get products made from dogs that help with several ailments my dog has. I love them, and she does too. At the same time, dispensaries also offer a means for those who enjoy marijuana to get it from a source they can trust and rely on to have a product they want, served from people knowledgeable enough to offer and educate them on the array of different products. Sounds a lot better than some guy on a street corner who may or may not be giving you what you asked for. I don't know, maybe that's just me. Over the past few weeks, I've seen and heard a lot of concern about the look that dispensaries give off and the crowd that it will attract. For those that feel this way, I really ask you to go and visit some nearby dispensaries. I think you'll find yourself quite surprised at how professional and clean they are. Any of the local dispensaries that I frequent, quite frankly, are much nicer than the majority of liquor and party stories, stores in the area.
Your, your time is up, but if you have a final comment you want to wrap up on, I would appreciate that.
Okay, sounds good. Um, I guess the points that I brought up, as well as a little bit more, um, I think these points are much more, and much more are why our diverse and forward-thinking community should be eager to embrace cannabis establishment in our hometown. I'm more in cop, and I'm more than happy if anyone wants to reach out to me privately to discuss more matters about this. You know, I consider myself a very knowledgeable person on the case, and this is much more than just me saying it. I have facts and figures to back this all up. It's a very compassionate world, the cannabis industry, so maybe just go and check some places out if you're unsure about it all.
Thanks, Jared. Really appreciate your comments. Thanks for joining in the meeting today.
Hey, Jason, can I just make one comment there?
Sure.
Yeah, um, you know, I, I know what he was referring to in terms of, you know, the, the look and the feel in terms of, uh, you know, massive Facebook posts that was, was out there and villagers and, and just frustrating being a, I'm city council, not being allowed to really respond to those. But since he brought it up, I just, I do want to say one thing is, is that we have zoning standards. Um, and any, you know, should, should, should an ordinance pass, businesses will be, will be required to adhere to those zoning standards. So guard towers and, you know, six foot gated, you know, fences and things like that. You know, tho- those aren't part of our, our zoning standard, so, um, you know, it was, it was a lot, it was much ado about nothing on, on a lot of those posts. So I, I know what he was referring to, so I just wanted.
It's a good point. If, if anybody feels that way and is on this meeting and has, has access to the agenda for this meeting, then they can actually see the proposed language and see that it explicitly excludes or denies the use of, like, uh, security materials like bars and things like that. Other than anything that's a security thing, other than a security camera cannot be in use during operating hours. And so there is consideration, this is one example, there are other examples in the ordinance as well that take into consideration the look and feel and of the, the businesses that would be covered under this ordinance.
Next up, you have Ms. Dawn Medley. Dawn, you are unmuted and you can talk.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, me.
I'll keep it very short and sweet. I very much support the opportunity to have these new businesses with additional tax revenue for Lathir Village. As marijuana is legal and as I have toured other facilities as part of the Lathir Village Committee to review these businesses, I could find no reason to not have them come to Lathir Village. We need the revenue as we pay some of the highest taxes in the area. Several of the people who have been very outspoken on social media against these businesses freely admit in private to supporting, using and buying marijuana. They just don't want it sold here. My parents sold alcohol to similar folks when they owned a liquor store and those folks needed to pick it up at the back door. It will not change our quality of life except to improve it. The liquor store at Twelve Mile has never interfered or impacted my quality of life in Lathir Village. Please vote to move this forward. Thank you.
You, Dawn, appreciate the comment.
All right, Jared has his hand up again. I do not see anyone else.
I didn't mean to have my hand up, sorry about that.
Okay. So far, there is no other comment. Oh, one more, here's Cultivate Events in Community. Are you're unmuted? All right, at Cultivate Events in a community, you're unmuted if you'd like to make a comment.
You actually have to take yourself off mute, which you can do now.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me? Yeah, we can hear you, if you can hear us. We absolutely can hear you.
All right, awesome. Um, as a resident of Lathir Village, I do not believe a, what?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, as a resident of Lathir Village, I do not believe a retail marijuana store will attract anything more than some traffic, which could easily be managed by the LVPD. The services to residents, community funding, as well as tax, the tax revenue would be very welcome. I believe the people who are opposing this have not done the research that our counselor, that our capital and study team have done. So please support this plan and allow our town to benefit from this growing industry.
Can you please provide your name as well for the record, please?
Yes, uh, my name is Ellie Medley.
Thank you, Ellie. Thanks for your comment.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, uh, Kalen Danforth. Kalen, you are able to speak.
Thank you. So yes, hi, I'm Kalen. So I'm a registered nurse and I'm a thirty-year Lathir Village resident. I'm in favor of the legal, legalization of marijuana. I voted for it. I mean, I know tons of people who use it and I care nothing about it. In fact, I prefer it to pharmaceuticals, so my opinion has absolutely nothing to do with, I like, I simply don't care about marijuana, like, it's a non-issue to me. Based on my research, I'm still in school, so I have access to my, um, you know, the scholarly articles that I can get at my school library, which is Purdue University Global. And I've been reading those articles, so it's not just like some Google search. So based on my research with that, and then also for many other reasons that I can't say in, you know, just three minutes, I just simply don't feel like it's the right fit for our city. We're just really small and we're just not like other cities. Uh, in terms of the Facebook post that you're all referring to, that was mine, obviously. Um, the information that I posted on there, I got from the business owner who's herself, who was in contact with the potential dispensary. So the information came from only one kind of middleman from the, the potential, the potential dispensary itself. So that's where that information came from. I have heard that the zoning standards don't allow this or that in the past, but I've seen those standards violated and nothing be done about it. So that's where my con- concern comes in and why kind of the zoning standards being a remedy to that, uh, just doesn't really quell my concerns. And that's it. Obviously, I'm against it, but you all already knew that.
Thanks, Kalen. Appreciate your comment. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have, uh, Laney Dixon. Laney, you are unmuted.
Lonnie Dixon? It's okay, it's spelled weird. It's my parents' fault. Good evening, everyone. Um, I, of course, am a Lathir Village resident, resident, and I just want to let everybody know that there aren't many businesses that can benefit our city with tax revenue as quickly as these retail establishments can. It's legal for adults. I did not believe we should let folks who haven't done the research thoroughly visit other places determine how we move forward. You have the facts, so please allow these businesses to have an opportunity to benefit us with tax revenue. I love Lathir Village. I am so proud to be a Lathir Village resident, and I would never support anything that I thought would bring bad ill repute or bad things to our community. I love it, and because of this, I want us to benefit from this tax revenue from a legal business, and that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks, Lonnie. Appreciate the comment. Thank you very much.
Uh, there is a comment in the chat from Regina asking, when is the vote, who will vote? And once passed, how long is the process to open? And I will say that, uh, city council is having their first reading on June twenty first for the ordinance with a tentative, uh, second reading scheduled for July twenty sixth. Your public hearing for, uh, the zoning ordinance related to cannabis will be on July twentieth. Assuming that city council moves forward with approving cannabis uses, there will be a thirty day application period, which I anticipate to begin sometime in probably mid-August. So that's approximately thirty days, and we are still finalizing the evaluation criteria. Does that, did I capture everything, Scott?
Yeah, I think the one thing that I would add, I'm sorry, go ahead, Scott, hit some that.
No, I was just gonna say, I think, uh, the, the one correction, it's not a public hearing for the general ordinance, it's a public, what do we call, public comment?
Public comment, sorry.
But the, uh, yeah, there's the application process, and while the criteria is still being defined, the process is already defined. Um, and the process is a scoring system based on a number of different criteria amongst all the applicants. So, you know, the, the, the applications that best fit the requirements that are defined by our city council with input from the community, those would be the businesses that would be approved for licensing if we get to that point.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Cobb did say that she is in favor of, um, she is in favor of it, so.
I think the, the one other thing that I will say, well, it's obviously, you know, uh, there's the, the planning commission taking action on zoning ordinances for cannabis businesses kind of greases the skids, those, these businesses being legally able to operate inside the city limits. It's not a rubber stamp. It's not a, a foregone conclusion that just because we're establishing zoning ordinances for cannabis businesses that there will actually be cannabis businesses in the community, that decision comes down to the city council. So, uh, anybody who feels favor, uh, you know, passionately, as we've heard today, either for or against those businesses being present, I would really recommend that you, uh, make sure to.
And I can't go into reasons why.
Suzy, anybody else looking like they want to make a comment?
I am not seeing anyone else with their hand up or any additional comments in chat. Jared, did you have, Jared's got his hand up again. Jared, did you have something additional that you wanted to add?
Yeah, super quick. Um, I just wanted to recommend two different dispensaries nearby that people could go and check out if you have your doubts or if you're just curious. Uh, there's Green Buddha in Ferndale, which I really like to go to. And there's also, um, New, New Standard in Hazel Park, two great establishments, uh, good examples of what nearby dispensaries look like and, you know, what standards they're held to. So that's all I had to say about that.
Thank you, Jared.
Yep.
Okay, with that, uh, well, oh, there's more comment in the chat. Suzy.
Sorry, I got a little click happy there. This is from, uh, Ms. Jennifer Lopez. She says, I am in favor. I feel Lathir Village may be a little behind other cities, even as a small village. This may make us more current and put us on the map more in making better funding to beautify our city more.
Yeah, I'll just make a comment on that, Suzy. It may seem like we're behind, but we, we purposely, council purposely opted out when the recreational law was passed and we put a, we put a sunset of, of two years, I think, no, what was it, eighteen months and then, and then a year, Scott? Yeah, um, and we did that purposely because what we wanted to do, we, we didn't want to.
Yeah, and we did that purposely because what we wanted to do, we didn't want to be an early adopter. We figured we would let other communities, you know, have all the growing pains and figure out, you know, what needs to be in an ordinance and what doesn't need to be in an ordinance. And then we specifically put expiration dates on the sunset clauses so that we were forced as a council to actually take up the issue and decide whether or not it fits our community after there was, there was data and businesses in place that we could then begin to look at and get a better sense of, of what works and what doesn't, what would work and what might not work for our community. So the behind-the-times thing is, was actually intent, so.
And just if I can, just to give some context, in the communities that we work in and communities that we are seeing across the state, I don't think that the city of Laker Village is in any way behind the times. In fact, I think you've done a very good job of staying current, of being involved, really studying the issue, not jumping in too quickly, nor really dragging your feet. I think you set a timeline and you've stuck with it, and I think that's been really, it's been a good process for you, I think. Regardless of how it ends up at the end.
Okay, yeah, the purpose of doing that is to figure out what's the right thing, right? So whatever result, whatever decision the city council ends up making, that'll be the one based on the most information possible. Okay, with that, we'll close out the public comment section of our agenda and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a cannabis discussion.
Well, and I'll go, I'm gonna go first since it kind of leads in from the, from the public comment we just had. I sent you all included in your packet was the summary of the open house that we had on the 26th, and probably about a half hour before the meeting began, I sent you an updated version with some additional comments that we received today. I'd say over half of the comments we received were not in favor of cannabis. There were a few that are in favor or leaning neutral. We had probably about, overall, there's probably about two dozen attendees at the open house, and they were way hardy, they were on time. I'd say half of them were industry folks. The other half were made up of some residents and commercial property owners, predominantly looking to just learn more about what is being proposed and really just get a better understanding of what's happening and what the process may be and what the timelines, what kind of timeline we're looking at. So overall, I was pretty happy with, with the turnout. Those materials have been up in City Hall since, since then. I've had a few conversations with residents at the table. And again, they're just looking for, looking for information, so. That's kind of where we're at. All of the comments that we had will still be, they'll be posted online, so. And Jill, did you have anything that you'd like to add about the ordinance language?
I, the only thing that I wanted to just confirm, and I think I know, I think I have it right in the ordinance, but I wanted to just make sure. And that was over the separation distance. We have the 1,000-foot distance between the schools, childcare, child support services, parks or playgrounds, substance abuse disorder clinic, and then 500-foot reduction for facilities that serve as temporary emergency shelters, but no separation between cannabis facilities. Was that correct? Did I remember that correctly? Okay, I thought so. It was something that I had, it was like a lingering thing I needed to tidy up. So it's, that's, that's it.
Good. Yeah, I reviewed the draft ordinance myself last night, and it looked like it incorporated everything that we had discussed previously. So I didn't have any additional comments on it myself.
It looks like Robyn's got her hand up as well.
Oh, go ahead, Robyn.
Yeah, thanks, Jason. So I just had a couple of questions about the ordinance, Jill or Scott or for Suzie. So did this ordinance mirror some of the other cities ordinances when you were planning the information? You looked at surrounding cities, and I mean locally, not, you know, too far out, and included provisions that sort of mirrored the other ordinances? Is that a true statement?
Yeah, I think we looked at what we thought were better ordinances in other communities and then looked to see how they really were applicable to Laker Village with an eye to what we know the city's been trying to accomplish, really from an economic development standpoint. And so some of the things you'll see in the zoning standards are requirements to, to bring those buildings in line with the current design standards for the districts in which they're located, which would be good for the mixed-use district. Really trying to encourage development in a similar fashion that hopefully investment in these properties will, will generate.
The only reason I asked that, Jill, is some of the comments that were made in the, from the cannabis open house. And again, I think just to echo Jason, the planning commission's role in reviewing the cannabis ordinance and looking at things as related to zoning, where some of the comments appear, you know, to relate to enforcement perhaps of laws or otherwise that may affect, you know, some other, some other things that we might not necessarily have to consider. So I just wanted to know if you were looking at, you know, other cities ordinances and developing it, at least from a zoning perspective, because it does make a difference. And, you know, just as a side note, I come from the city of Southfield Planning Commission, and this is really no different than the Walmart coming to Southfield, to be honest with you, and the feedback that came from that, so.
I think the Walmart must have been worse.
It was a lot worse. It was a lot worse. Yeah. But, but just in, you know, in trying to address some of the citizens or residents' concerns and what the planning commission's function is, I think it's just important to note that, you know, when you're looking at the zoning ordinances, you're looking at, as you said, economic development, you're looking at other features, and also what surrounding communities have put into their own ordinances to kind of make it consistent across the board. So just, just some comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, and then, and then there's also a general ordinance piece that, that, that goes through, goes to council as well.
Exactly. And Bruce, thank you for that. Just, and again, differentiating between planning commission's role and city council's role when you're looking at these types of hotbed issues, I think is just very important.
Yeah.
Thanks, Robyn. You mentioned, Jill, and it's popping up because it's in red in our draft. In the draft of the ordinance language, the item 5E, which is a facility serves as a temporary emergency shelter, is included in the separation instances, and there's a note that this distance may be reduced to 500 feet by the approving body. So you're looking for our feedback on whether, or do we already give you that feedback?
I think we decided it was, or you decided it was 500 feet, but I had reflected that in the ordinance language. I just wanted, it was reflected that way on the map, but I wanted to make sure that the language was in alignment with that. So I was pointing out that I had changed that.
Thank you. Okay, great. That's perfect. Thank you. Okay, any other comments from planning commissioners about the language in this ordinance? Okay, well, with that, I think we are at the point of entertaining a motion related to this ordinance, whether to recommend it for approval by city council.
Well, not quite, actually. That'll be, you can do that at, I was anticipating you would do that in July at your official public hearing. This is, we had originally discussed having this meeting as your public hearing, but upon receiving some additional feedback from residents indicating that we're not enough sufficient opportunities for public engagement, we decided to make this just a public comment. And then your official public hearing again will be on the 20th of July.
Okay, so we won't take any action item, action on this today. There will be a public hearing on July 20th during which we'll consider this language an additional time and then make an action at that point. Excellent. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is building materials study group.
So last month, Jason, you and Mark were like, yes, I want to be on the building materials study group. But since we were, we're, Anna, Anna was, it was Anna's last meeting and Charlie had already left us. I thought, you know, Jill is a little lonely. So, and I know you had talked about perhaps asking other, another planning commissioner, you can have one more join you, and so I wanted to put this on the agenda so you can add whoever has a burning desire to join you in that conversation.
Sure. So Robyn and Terrence, for your benefit and awareness, we, we, we've been considering updating the city's ordinances around building materials, and there was some pretty vocal feedback that we got about things that people were really concerned about. And the existing ordinance is, just like a lot of our ordinance is very old and takes into account materials that are either difficult to acquire or expensive to acquire now. And so there was, there have been some suggestions to update the ordinance to include more modern materials that are maybe more affordable and also just as safe as materials that are in our ordinances. But because of the feedback that we got, we, the chairman, Petrowski, and I thought it would be a good idea to actually put together some sort of a study group to look into this a little bit further before making any recommendation to city council about what the planning commission would suggest. They adjust the ordinance for building materials to look like. So that's what the purpose of this is. My, personally, I think that we also should engage maybe one or two, maybe more residences, residents to be part of the study group as well, to help us look into it and give us a perspective from people who, you know, just aren't on the planning commission. Obviously, anybody's welcome to provide the working group or the planning commission as a whole with their comments. But being in the working group and the study group means you get an opportunity to actually discuss it a little bit more detail. So that was my intention. But Suzie's right, it's a good idea for us to have out of a planning commission of seven people, probably three people from that commission to be part of the study group. So the question is, is anybody willing to volunteer to be on this, their building materials study group along with Mark and I?
Sure, I'll be on it.
Thanks, Les. Great. All right, Suzie, put Les down, and then I imagine our next action item for the study group will be actually have a kickoff meeting.
Okay.
And.
Do they need to make a motion to appoint Les, or was it just established last?
I think we, actually, didn't we appoint Les last month without him knowing?
Talked about it. We did talk that we wanted to have Les there. Jason, Jason was like, I think we should have Les. But now, since he volunteered.
If I recall, the motion they created, the subcommittee allowed for them to expand it with an additional planning commissioner or members of public if, if they chose or felt that that was appropriate. So I don't think there's any action item required for this evening, just to set a schedule meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need to set the date for kickoff meeting during this meeting, or can we do that via email?
Yeah, you can coordinate that amongst yourselves. That doesn't have to be part of this. As long as there's not a quorum, then it doesn't need to be a notice meeting.
Got it. Okay. Thanks, Scott.
And I will make sure that you have, I'll start adding the building study group as under nine, so you guys are going to be responsible for giving us updates, just saying.
Okay, all right. Les helped hold me accountable. We'll get a four-group, study group, sorry, a building and tail study group kickoff meeting scheduled between you, me, and Mark. We can get this thing going.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, that closes out that agenda item and move on to the next agenda item, which is other matters for discussion. And the agenda item under there is on sustainability and resiliency session.
All right, that last item that we included was sort of an offshoot from some of the conversations that we were having about landscaping. And when Suzie and I were talking about that, we were talking about the rain gardens, we started talking about a little bit more about sustainability more broadly, and wondered if that was something that planning commission would be interested in. Maybe just having a little bit of background and, and I guess kind of throwing it open to you. It is something that we mentioned in the comprehensive plan, and I know that there was some interest and support for improving sustainability and resiliency in the city. I provided the background really to be sort of supplementals to our conversation about landscaping, and as it turned out, I think it kind of was. Is there any interest? I didn't want to go too far down that road, though, without some more feedback and conversation with planning commissioners to find out where you all are at with that and your ideas on, on those topics.
And I'll just add to that, since I know Jill isn't quite anticipating, be like, number one on that one. I'm sorry. I, my thoughts were really specifically towards stormwater management is kind of where my brain was coming at when we, when Jill and I were initially discussing the sustainability. And I would love for, I'd love to see the city embrace more of those low-impact design standards. What can we do? I know we have one example of permeable pavement that maybe is not working the way we anticipated it to, but perhaps there's other standards that we can incorporate. Obviously, we would have to pull our city engineer into these kind of stormwater conversations. But I, I see no reason why we shouldn't embrace a little, some progressive planning and and do something unique. There's no reason why, why not? So that's kind of where my, my thought process is. I know I haven't mentioned this to Jill recently, but in terms of resiliency and sustainability, you know, I mean, to me, that also, not just stormwater, that, you know, tree ordinances, what kind of, what can we do to improve and enhance our tree canopy, you know, conduct inventories, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, you know, for me, it's all about the nature, so.
That's great. Yeah, three comments on this one myself. The first one is that I think as a planning commission, we get mired in very specific tasks around things like ordinance language, site review plans and things like this. So it's great to be presented with the suggestion to consider something that's more strategic. You know, we need a comprehensive plan, and, you know, we do other activities that are part of our strategic planning as a city, but this is something kind of above and beyond that. So that's great. The second thing is that this is a progressive topic, and personally, I'm invested in introducing progressive ideas into our city. It's one of the reasons that I wanted to be on the planning commission. So the fact that this is around a topic that is, is progressive and takes into account things like climate change and the impact that planning has on helping our community to handle changing situations that are based on things like climate change. I like that a lot. And the third one is, you know, in the section in the memo about how do we get started, I love the idea of let's not try to boil the ocean, like, let's pick one sustainability or resiliency topic to start with and just focus on that, just to get our feet wet and get kind of a structure around how we'll deal with topics in this context, and then carry it forward from there. Let's not try and build some big holistic strategy around resiliency and sustainability. Because if we try to do that, I don't think it'll work. But if we do pick one thing, the suggestion in the memo is on flooding, but it could be any specific thing that's related to, to resiliency and sustainability. And get that working, then we'll also build the construct for how do we deal with other sustainability, sustainability and resiliency topics going forward. Any other comments from other commissioners?
No, Jason, I agree exactly what you said. I think we should start small and then at least create a framework, and then that'll give us the ability to look at each project one at a time until we get our feet really wet.
Great.
Yeah. I agree, Jason.
Thanks. Excellent. So we support this. We want to start doing something on sustainability and resiliency. Suzie, where do we start?
Well, do you want to literally get your feet wet with flooding? I mean, we can do that. I, there's so many, I mean, we all know, there's so many options. So, I mean, if there's, pick the bro out your favorite topics and let's see what you think.
To me, flooding seems like it's connected to what's going on with the infrastructure committee, right? Culverts and ditches. So. Culverts and ditches. Um, so Bruce, do you feel like what the infrastructure committee has been working on is sufficient or do you?
No.
Yeah, so we should do.
No, I mean, I mean, the, the, what, you know, the, the original proposal two years ago would have addressed the situation, but, um, the approved proposal the following year, um, only addresses, I think it's, I don't, it's so funny. Once, once this project started, my mind is just letting all these facts go, but I, I, I think it's, I think it's about seven miles or seven point one miles of twenty six miles of, of, of road uh, is being addressed. So, you know, about twenty, what is that, twenty eight percent, something like that of, 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 of our road. Um, so only twenty eight percent of our, our ditches are, you know, being addressed. So, um, what we had talked about, uh, is that, um, you know, the other, you know, remaining percentage would be something that we would do, you know, try to do a little bit with from using more aggressive, uh, code enforcement to find the obvious thing. So, so the, the, the classic example that I always give, and I've been giving for two years now, is you know, across my side of the street drains perfectly. The other side of the street, um, all comes down to the end of the street and there's one tree root that's blocking that ditch. And so it backs up all the way down there. Well, that's something that could very easily be taken care of. You know, via a letter from code enforcement. Um, so there's, there's a lot of, excuse me, there's a lot of things like that that we can do. Um, people's culverts that aren't functioning, you know, the ones that have risen up through the concrete, um, that are causing water to back up. You know, lots of little things like that, that code enforcement can, um, identify and correct, you know, in that remaining, you know, you know, sixty two percent, seventy two percent, whatever, whatever the math is. Um, you know, so, you know, maybe, you know, we can look at, you know, ways that we can maybe speed that process up as planning, as a planning commission or other things that we can do to get that remaining percentage looked at, um, because, you know, the, the approved proposal, you know, really only does a very small part. And, and interestingly enough, um, the first year, which we're just finishing up now, um, you know, what we found is that, that on those roads that we addressed, there really weren't a lot of uh, issues with those particular roads. Um, so we really didn't do a, a ton of, of, you know, ditch fixing in this first year. I don't know what year two and three will look like, but, um, you know, so, so even, yeah, we really didn't do a lot because it wasn't necessary on the roads that we chose. So, um, yeah, seems like, seems like that, that maybe that's, this is a good place to start.
Yeah, something needs to happen with flooding is kind of the point I'm hearing you make. Um, and, but, but I think all the points are very tactical, right? Code enforcement. So it means we have to think outside the box and, or figure out these more comprehensive and sustainable solution to that problem. And so if that's the, if that would be the purpose of, you know, our work in sustainability and resilience relative to the context of how do we deal with flooding, then I'm all for it. If we're just gonna like, put, you know, continue to push code enforcement as the solution, that doesn't seem like a sustainability and resiliency, a strategic approach to sustainability and resiliency. That seems like a bandaid. So I'm, I'm for it and, and focusing on flooding as long as, you know, we can all agree that we're gonna look at it from a more strategic and holistic perspective.
Yeah, and there's, there's things that we can do, like, you know, taking a street at a time and try to work with the residents of a particular street, for example, um, you know, to, uh, um, you know, work as a street to fix their particular problems. So a, a great example of that, we, we hope that this is going to happen, but it, it's on our June twenty first council meeting, but, um, you know, the red, some of the residents of Cambridge were just completely fed up with their, their, their problem, their flooding problem. And they came to us to, you know, kind of design a solution. So we actually uh, designed an underground swale system where their ditches would essentially go away. Um, of course, it's going to be somewhat costly. And so we're, we're doing a, um, a notice of intent at our next um, council meeting to basically kick off the special assessment project for that pride, or special assessment process for that project. Um, to see how the residents, you know, react when they see the, the, the potential costs. I mean, hopefully they'll approve it. They may or they may not, but, but again, that's something, you know, projects like that could be things that we could, you know, maybe add a hand in as, as a planning commission. So like you said, there's ways of thinking outside of the box to, you know, try to, try to address the problem.
Great. Okay. Um, are there any other topics other than flooding, Susie, that you guys had to consider in your conversations on this topic?
Why?
Um, I think one of the things that, that we were kind of thinking about was the idea of, um, resiliency is specific to, um, communications and, um, providing residents with resources around external shocks to the community. So whether it's a flooding event or whether it's a health-related event um, like a pandemic or something, hopefully we don't have to go through this again anytime soon, but um, to make sure that we have systems in place. And one of the things that we talked about during the comprehensive plan process was the idea of these neighborhood groups. Um, and it seems to be a really good way to, um, start building in some resiliency really at the grassroots level in terms of, um, ensuring that we have strong networks within those neighborhoods to help make sure that people who need resources can get to them. Um, so that might be a really different, um, kind of coming at it from a very different perspective, um, but one that I think is, is useful and, um, so I wonder what you all think about that.
I, I love that because I think we're going to need that as the infrastructure projects continue. Right? We've already seen, we've had some challenges with communication in these initial phases of the infrastructure improvement projects.
Well, especially since there's that older, and I'm finding it more and more, um, those, the older individuals, I mean, it's, okay, so we've got our e-newsletter and that's where our most up-to-date information is, but um, you know, those older individuals are not getting them. I talk, you know, I talked to, to one lady, she's like, I'm still very young. I'm eighty six. And she was literally taking a printout of the e-newsletter that I don't even know where she got, and she was just showing it to all of her neighbors. Um, and, and the irony is that we can't, I mean, the mail's just not, the mail's just not, it functions like.
It's not reliable enough and it's expensive and, yeah.
And, and it's all stopped on their road, on all the roads that are under construction anyways. So how are they going to get it? Like it, it just, ah, you know, so like having that neighborhood communication, I, I mean, I see, I, I, I hear about it happening, right? But like, being able to, to really improve it, improve that neighbor to neighbor connection, I think is important.
Okay. I, I agree. Um, I think both the, the communication initiative and the flooding initiative, uh, you know, how to deal with flooding issues, those are both worthy. Um,
Um, I think the tree, the tree, a tree inventory, I think with, like, a, a community-driven sort of tree inventory would, um, it is interesting to me from a couple of different levels. Um, one, I just go, everybody go hug a tree. Um, Scott will hug one when he gets out of his camper, I'm sure. Um,
I have plenty of trees at his house to hug.
So, um, but, you know, one, we are, you know, we're, we're a tree city. Um, we have a, there's been a desire by a handful of residents that I've talked to about uh, re-establishing a, uh, a resident tree purchasing program that apparently was in place years before. Um, I, you know, so there's, there's that element as part of the, again, the infrastructure projects. Um, you know, we know we're going to end up taking down some, some trees at some point, um, during, during this whole process, um, encountering, you know, street trees that are just, you know, they got, grind the roots and that's just not necessarily going to work. Um, and so how do we best inventory those? So that we can then implement a better management system for our tree canopy and identify which trees need to come down because of disease or which, you know, and just that tree truing process that needs to happen just as part of good tree maintenance. So.
If that's even something that we could do in, as a way to launch the neighborhood activities, we have like a neighborhood activity where in each neighborhood, we do a little workshop on tree identification. And like we are doing with the, um, the water connections where people take pictures and they upload to the map, we can do the same thing with trees.
I already talked to Cassie about it. Sorry, she's our GIS girl at, um, Gipels and she's awesome. So.
Yes, she's, she is awesome. And we've been talking about it and we think it's just a great, it, it's, it's citizen science is what it is and it's a lot of fun. And I think people would really get excited by it. And I think it really is a nice tie-in. We can do it in each neighborhood that sort of gives us a reason to get together and people to feel like, oh, this is kind of a fun thing that we're doing together. And then we can start building from there. Getting multiple things out of it.
So, so Joe, one of my things is, I, I see that as a mechanism, but, you know, from a resident standpoint, we probably need to explain the why.
Oh, yeah.
Because, because I think what would happen, at least in my corridor, uh, folks who, you know, we have Asian trees because obviously I love what Susie mentioned about the trees, because obviously, uh, trees have a life cycle. And a lot of the pine trees and certain types of trees, they're, they're at the end. And so, so, so we just need to recognize that that's actually just reality of our neighborhoods. Um, but with that being said, I think that, um, in, in when I, my work in Bow Creek, we call it neighborhood planning councils. And kind of breaking it down into, okay, what is the strategic plan? Like, wh- what, why, what's the why? If we're telling residents, if we're telling our neighbors, um, and I think it actually even goes beyond frankly, the, the planning commission. If you really want to think about it, because frankly, how do we bubble up great ideas from residents, uh, through the ecosystem, uh, of the municipality? And, and I think that's kind of what I'm looking at. Um, yes, it impacts zoning, but there's probably more conversations that need to be had. Uh, where residents see different things and, and they don't really have a mechanism other than, you know, Facebook, uh, to, to really chat about it. And so maybe this will alleviate some of that.
Yeah, I like that, that a lot. Great.
Sounds like we can tie a couple of these initiatives together, right? We can.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I think it was the hub, Jason, to be honest, uh, when, you know, with other cities I'm working with, i- it's basically a, a hub to, well, first of all, usually it's just about streetlights or about, you know, X, Y, Z hedge or something like that. But, you know, aspirationally, it's about basically the, the citizens and residents taking collective ownership in partnership with the city and where the city's going. You know, beyond just the leadership that's, you know, here and on the council and DDA, et cetera. Uh, but the more that I think residents feel like they, their voice is heard and they can collectively own this. That's why I love the pictures of trees or, or whatever, uh, thing we're doing, but it has to have a why. Uh, because frankly, in my corridor, I've been here what, twenty years and, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm here, but, but our neighbors just don't talk as much. And I think we need a catalyst in order to actually get everyone rallied around a singular purpose of why we're doing.
I was think remembering that you had mentioned that at a previous meeting when we were talking about park space, particularly in your neighborhood, that you don't really have any. Um, and so I think that's, you know, like you said, thinking about a common thing that you can gather and rally around. Um, and maybe something will come up through this where there's a way that, that your neighborhood can identify a way to have a common, a common space.
I, I hope so, because, you know, again, uh, I, I mean, I'm always, what Jason knows, I'm always walking across the highway and, and taking a walk from my wife down, down to city hall and blah, blah, blah. And, and it's really, we don't have, you know, when we had our kids were little, we didn't have a park space to really go to. Otherwise, I'm going to Southfield and down the street down Lincoln and I'm going to find another park. And so, you know, it's just something to think about, um, because I know to actually mobilize the folks on my side of the street uh, of Lathrop, you know, i- i- it's a little bit different, I think. Um, because we're just not very connected just because of the nature of our corridor.
Right.
Right. Yeah, it makes sense. I mean, I guess what I would like to see is, um, an initiative, maybe sponsored and kind of incubated from the planning commission, um, to build some, whatever we're going to call it, community networking or community communications or something like that. Um, around these two issues, the tree inventory and flooding. And that, I, I don't think, if we make it any more complicated than that, it's gonna, again, get back to the thing I was talking about, about boiling the ocean. Um, but in my mind, I'm envisioning, we pick some date, month or two down the road, we um, knock on doors, send flyers, post in the newsletter, post on Facebook, do whatever we can to get the word out about organizing events in each neighborhood. And then maybe, you know, at least one person from the planning commission and maybe one person from city council, if it's feasible. Uh, and hopefully more, but at least a minimum of that would be kind of the sponsors of those, uh, kickoff events and congregate.
You could do a PSA for us.
I totally could. I would absolutely be happy. Um, yeah, that's what I'm envisioning. So we pick a date and we just like try and get the word out and, and then hopefully people show up. And then that's the beginning of it. And then we just need to do that on a going basis. And encourage the people that show up to spread the word. So hopefully the next meeting grows and the one after that grows and they'll tell two friends and so on and so on.
So, so Jason, I'm going to be devil's advocate. I, I know from my community, uh, at least when I talk to my neighbors, th- they're probably not, it's hard to get. Even when the, the road, you know, we're talking about the roads and obviously it didn't pass and blah, blah, blah. Uh, like Bruce was like, had to come to my house and he was like pulling teeth just to get everyone to congregate my house about roads. And, and so if, if we're trying to get everyone in my name, in my corridor to congregate about trees, it's probably not going to be a big enough carrot to actually catalyze, I think, what we want it to be. And so I'm just, I'm just being just candid.
So then the challenge back is, well, it, two things. What is the issue?
Exactly.
That might catalyze enough people, but also like, yeah, you can do the organizing event, maybe only a couple of people show up. But if, if we've done the work to actually go and knock on doors and make people aware of it, and maybe even write down some names and email addresses and phone numbers of people who are interested in participating, but can't make it to that date for whatever reason. And at least we're starting to build, uh, some sort of an inventory of who in the neighborhood cares. And building connections between the people who are sponsoring the community network for their segment of the community, so that then there can be ongoing communication, either walking across the street or making a phone call or sending an email. I think this is better than nothing, I guess.
It is. I, I agree with you on that one.
Uh, and if it fails, it fails and we try something else, but, uh, and that's just my idea. I'm not even necessarily saying that's the best one or the only one. So if other people have suggestions, um, absolutely would love to hear them.
Well, I, my, my, my suggestion is we may need to back into sustainability, but just rally the neighborhoods in the corridors together. And then you talk about sustainability and we're going to have a follow-up meeting. But I, I always say, sometimes you have to have the carrot to actually get to where you want to go. O- otherwise, i- it, it just doesn't do as well. Um, you know, years back, we used to block off a street on Lathrop Boulevard, on Lathrop Boulevard. And we would just have like a little neighborhood party. And, and, and it, I don't think it takes much for people, especially because of the global pandemic, because people want to get outside anyway. Um, and, and so, so I'm always thinking of a carrot to get people rallied together to actually see each other again and not be locked in our houses. And then back into sustainability, because I think it will work. It's just a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down.
So what if we did something like a food truck rally?
Yes.
In each of the four quadrants, right? Instead of, we always do it at city hall.
Yep. Yep.
TDA was also talking about doing a, um, we were talking about just events. So like, clearly not just, I mean, I'll share my ideas, uh, do a barbecue competition, you know, um, get, get the PD involved. Cause let me tell you, like, we're having, we're having a barbecue, like a city thing, and I can't wait for them to cook. I'm like, well, you can't see it, but there's like a shiny drill, right? Like barbecue competition.
Yeah, any flyers, Susie, for a barbecue competition running by me this time.
Why? Why?
Remember the problem we had with the, oh, you weren't here. We had an issue with our last, uh, barbecue competition. Cheryl knows.
Okay. I can't wait for you to send it to me so I can see. Um, okay, will do. No problem.
Well, I do, I do know that food trucks are, uh, we used to, you know, I think a couple of years ago, we had like, uh, next to the city hall, we Well, I do, I knew you know that food trucks are, uh, we used to, you know, I think a couple of years ago, we had like, uh, next to the city hall, we had the food truck Fridays.
Yeah.
And and but what if we brought that to the neighborhoods? I know, uh, we just had. Two hundred people uh, on Sunday at City Hall, you know, my daughter's uh, open house, we did it at City Hall.
Oh, yeah.
And 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 the tacos were, or it was really simple. And and so that what might catalyze. Uh, the community, you know, uh, in in our different quadrants, because we all, all, all the quadrants have different personalities. And that that might be kind of cool.
I like that idea. I, the one thing I would be concerned about is equity, right? That's the, that's why we always do things at the municipal.
Yep.
Is because people feel like, well, then the entire community is invited. But I think if we plan one at each, at least in each, one in each of the four quadrants. That's equitable, everybody has access to one.
Exactly. And and hopefully it starts stories and conversations with neighbors that maybe you haven't talked to in a while. Uh, again, going, being locked in your, our houses, uh, that that might be kind of cool.
Yeah, I like the idea of striking while the iron is hot, right? While people, things are just opening up and people are eager to start getting back out, like, let's do it as soon as we can sometime this summer.
And we got a shout out from a community member on the chat.
Yeah, Kalen says, these are all what are fly ideas for community building. Couldn't agree more. Okay. So um, then I guess we'll need, Suzie, do we work with you to try and get these things kicked off? Should we work with Chris and Parks and Rec? What are you thinking?
Sure. I think we're gonna need, I I think it's, it's not just gonna have, it's not just gonna be me. I think we'll have to engage with Chris. Chris is um, got a really good network of and connections with. Those food trucks. Um, we're actually, DDA is gonna be. We're we're trying to find ways to incentivize the food trucks to come and participate. At the concert series, which is, I'm gonna be starting on the, on the twenty third. Um, and so. I, that it's just the perfect kind of segue lead into, hey, so we wanna do this. And um, and so, well, I mean. We powwow with the gang back at the office and see the best way we can uh, make this happen. When would like, ideal timing, when would you guys like see your first set of um, black parties?
I'm thinking, like, well, we need time to promote it, right, and organize it, plan it. So I'm thinking like the second or the third week in July.
Yeah, I would agree with that, because we probably need to identify leaders within each quadrant that kind of wants to be the, 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 the local promoter. As well as from, so top, bottom up and top down.
And I imagine we're gonna need to talk to them a few times and kind of sound them on the idea. And I can't imagine anybody just like raising their hand the first time we approached them about this, so it may take a little bit of time to, to get some people. To jump on board with that. And that's why I think it's important that we have sponsorship from planning commission and city council and these things too. Like, not that we own the, kind of the leadership of the, yeah, but we, we need to, we can't just like say, okay, here's the idea, community. You know, southwest project and go figure it out, like, we need to work with them on getting it started. And so that then they can, it can be more self sustaining.
So maybe um, it, I mean, your co captains kind of with, will find, you know, find another resident and find co captains. Um, in each quadrant, right? So.
Yeah.
I I'm already working on my pitch.
I knew you were, I knew you were, I could tell.
So I guess I'm thinking like July seventeenth, eighteenth or twenty fourth, or twenty fifth. Those are the Saturdays and Sundays at the end of the third and.
Which day, seventeenth, eighteenth, twenty?
Twenty fourth and twenty fifth. So those are the Saturdays and Sundays uh, at the end of the. Second full week of July and the end of the third full week of July. Okay.
Great.
Good discussion, I'm excited about this initiative, this is.
Fun stuff. We want, Jill and I wanted some fun stuff.
Glad you did. Thank you for encouraging us. You did a great job and we're excited about it.
Thank you all.
Okay, uh, that closes out the, that item in the agenda.
Jason, 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 can I, can I, as long as we're still on other matters, can I just bring up one thing real quick? Go backwards for one second.
You should have extended the agenda when we were approving the agenda.
I had a post-it note fall off and I had a question, I'm, I'm, I'm back to cannabis, sorry. But uh, on page twenty seven. Where it talks about the hours, I thought we had decided, maybe I'm not remembering correctly, but I thought we had decided that the. The hours would be regular retail hours, uh, like they are for any other business and and here it says that uh. No cannabis retailer shall be o- open after, after eight PM or before eight AM.
You are correct. We did talk about just doing regular business hours.
Yeah.
Special.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, sorry to digress.
Yeah.
Stronger post-it notes next time.
Thanks.
Stick them to your face, Bruce.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so we'll close out other matters uh, for discussion. Uh, the next gen item is the general communication updates.
Scott, do you have anything for us?
I think, uh, just say, Jason, you did a great job tonight running your first meeting.
Yeah, thank you. It's actually the second, but I improved, so, so much so that you noticed it.
Things along well, thank you.
Thank you.
Jill, did you have anything? Cause I got a couple of things.
Thanks.
You're done talking, okay, um, I, I mentioned it already, concerts, um, concerts start. On June twenty third, so this will be a good time for us to uh, start promoting our black parties, just saying. Um, also, the bike route is done, signage is up. We did have to do a little uh, little rerouting for safety concerns, crossing six ninety six and Jill's gonna get me a new revised map of it. And um, I don't think I asked already, so there's my official ask, but everything's up, um. Corey and I are gonna do our own version of, um, we're gonna do a little, a bike tour, it should be interesting. Starting tomorrow and then it'll be, um, we've got bike repair kiosks, there's one at City Hall, bright red, shiny beautiful. With a couple of loops and then there's, the second one is over in uh, Golden Gate Park right at Rainbow Drive. So we are gonna, it should be real interesting, because I don't actually know how to use these bike repair kiosks. So we're gonna figure out how to use them and we're gonna show everybody on probably like Facebook Live and it'll get. It's gonna be awesome, guys. Um, so. Go, and then in the fall, we will be doing an official grand opening of the bike route, um, and do our own version of a slow roll. There was just too much construction happening and considering that Santa Barbara is kind of like a main part of that bike route. Yeah, that's not gonna happen, so um, so stay tuned for a fall slow roll. This Saturday, we are having an art show um, at City Hall from ten until six. And we are having our very first ever unity in the community, Juneteenth celebration from four to eight. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have a panel, we're gonna have a storyteller, we're gonna have a hustle instructor. Um, we are gonna have um, an African drum and dance group uh, close out the evening for us. I'm really excited. Um, and so everybody should come for all of those things. It'll, it's gonna be amazing, so. Uh, Bruce, do you wanna give the infrastructure update?
Oh, wait, real quick, before, before we move on from those updates, uh, any update on repairing the spelling on the bike route sign?
Yes, that is in the process there. They, they had to fabricate obviously new signs, so um, those are the only ones that aren't quite up yet, but um, those next. Week or so.
Okay, and then as far as events, there's also, uh, I think it's on July eighteenth, there's a bark in the park event.
Oh.
Parks and Rec is playing it out, it's a little bit far out, but um, uh, I wanted to, tied to that, I happen to be on the. The steering committee for the dog park and uh, membership of the dog park actually has gone up considerably over the last few weeks. Um, maybe because the weather's getting nicer. So there had been a really lax uh, membership in the dog park and it, it, it's. Not exactly where we want it to be yet, but it is improving, so that's a good sign. There's been some great maintenance work going on, I think, from our high school, high school volunteers. That have been working with the, the Parks and Rec Committee, uh, sorry, the Parks and Rec Department to uh, to do volunteer hours. So the dog park is looking pretty good right now. And hopefully the uh, the, this event, this bark in the park event will help to raise awareness that it exists. And maybe even try to membership further.
Suzie, quick question.
Yes.
Back to the bike route.
Yes.
Now that all the signs are up, can I take that little steak out my grass?
Probably.
That, they didn't come back to take them out, so everybody in the neighborhood has these little pink stakes still in the grass where they put the signs. You know, you know, because the city put them in, nobody wants to touch them.
I, I think that it's safe to say you can take, take it out. And the only other thing I can think of that it would be there for would be um, for the fandom. Excavation work that is being done for water service line material verification.
Uh, this was definitely for the bike route.
Then if it was definitely for the bike route, then feel free to take those stakes out.
I'm sure if I take mine out, then everybody will take theirs out.
Good, good, be a leader, be a leader.
Start a trend. Okay, Bruce, infrastructure.
You got, you, you can do it, Suzie. I have, I have no, I have no notes in front of me, so.
Why? It's not still in your head? Um, phase one, donezo, so we, we've, that was. A relatively simple mill and fill, so phase one is done. Um, we started phase two, I want to say it was two weeks ago. Actually, two weeks earlier than we anticipated. And so that Wiltshire, San Jose and Alhambra have all. Received their first lift of asphalt and they're in that five to seven day cure period where you shouldn't be driving on it. I would expect that they're gonna get their second, second lift of asphalt next week, but I don't know that part of the schedule yet. Um, they started doing excavations on the concrete late, last week uh, for Santa Barbara. That continued again on Saturday and. Earlier and I guess Tuesday, so um, the start of this week too, so. If all goes well and it doesn't continue to pour cats and dogs every, you know, seven hours. If all goes well, we might even get the first lift of asphalt down on Santa Barbara by the end of the week. So um, we're moving along, we are moving along, so um, the best place for updates. Is still the e-newsletter. Residents can sign up for that on the city's website. And we have my favorite new reoccurring uh, segment called, what the heck is going on out there?
That's a great title.
I, I, I just had to, um, so uh, my second favorite would be catching up on cannabis that's. A little bit more irregular, but what the heck is happening out there is. Um, the best way to get in touch and um, updates come out every Friday. And they're on the city's website as well. And there's this fun little um, interactive map that Cassie at Kiphol Webster helped put us. Uh, put together and it's got all of the paving information and project information happening, so. Uh, the only thing you haven't seen work happening on um, is really the fire hydrants and the gate valves. And those are kind of on a standstill because we're waiting on materials, so.
Gate, gate valves too? I thought they were doing gate valves. I think, I think we're just, I think we're just waiting for the fire hydrants.
They all just kind of, some of it just kind of mushes together. Um, and then we are, uh. We are working very diligently on the random excavations in the neighborhood south of six ninety six. Reminder letters went out at the end of last week for all of those properties. And the focus for that area is to make sure that all those properties get done before we begin the sidewalk replacement program. Which will be in August, bids are, the, the project's out for bid now, we're expecting everything. To be returned by the seventeenth and have that for council. Consider and award a contract on the twenty first, which is going to be the longest meeting ever, so you should join us.
Have we had, have we had any bids come in yet?
Not that I know of, but I was not in the office today, so I will check with a vet tomorrow, so. A lot is happening. A lot is happening, so. I think that pretty much sums up everything. Did I miss anything, Bruce?
That you, one thing, but then I forgot, it popped in and out of my head, but couldn't have been that important, but.
Right on. And if you have questions, you know how to find me.
Certainly do. Great, okay, I think that closes up that agenda items that leads us to adjournment. Somebody like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.